All right, so it doesn't really matter if I see you as long as you can see me, I guess. But it doesn't really matter if you see me either, as long as you hear me. If you want to take notes and follow along in that way, I have put the PDF link in the chat box. You could probably click that and it'll take you to the online version. Neil has it, I see, because his video is still on. The front of it looks like this, in case you want to print it out. You don't need it. Because everything that you should need is going to be on the screen for you. And I'll bring that up in a little bit. Like I said, any questions, you can use the chat feature. If there are a little longer question, just virtually raise your hand with that button. And I can call on you and then you can unmute your mic and talk and we'll go with it that way. So the study today is Joseph from the Old Testament, not the New Testament. Sometimes we think of Joseph as the father of Jesus, and that's true. But the first Joseph is all the way back in the book of Genesis, one of the sons of Jacob. We will take things chapter by chapter a little bit. We'll cover chapter thirty seven of Genesis today and see how long it takes us. I'm only planning for an hour, and so we'll see if it takes that long. And if it does, we will stop and we get there and pick it up next time. We're starting with an introduction though, and at this point, I am going to share my screen with you. And I'm going to share the screen of the PowerPoint that we'll go to so that you can see it. So let me bring it up here. And I'm assuming everyone is going to see in that, right? So this is the, this is the opening. We have a blended family. And I want you, if you can, to think of how many of Jacob's twelve sons you can name. I'm going to give you thirty seconds. Do not cheat. I know you are capable of reading. Do not cheat, I think. We might be able to come up with most of them in this group. So if you have one, chat it in.
Reuben.
Yes, Reuben. What else? Levi heard. Good.
Dan.
Dan, yes.
Benjamin.
Benjamin is the last one.
Asher.
Yes, Asher.
Levi.
Good.
Simeon.
Yes.
Reuben.
Got Reuben.
Naptoley.
Yes.
How many is that?
I think we are missing at least three. No one has said the obvious one yet.
Joseph.
Joseph. There's a one that starts with an S.
Simeon.
Simeon. There's one that starts with an I.
Isakar.
Yep, Isakar. And there's one that starts with a G. I don't know if we've got that one yet.
Gad.
Gad. Very nice work. So you have twelve sons of Jacob. I like to think of them in groups of four to help me remember. Those first four on the left-hand side of your screen are the first four sons of Jacob's first wife. Jacob's first wife is Leah. Then the second group of four, Dan, Naptoley, Gad, and Asher. Those four are the sons of Jacob's servants. The last group of four, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, Isakar, Zebulun, we didn't see a Zebulun, did we? Joseph and Benjamin. Those four are two from Leah, two from Rachel. And we're going to look at that next, because this, this blended family was not a very pleasant family to live in. You have the twelve tribes of Israel here, and you can kind of see how it's going down. Twelve tribes of Israel, Abraham, Sarah have Isaac. Isaac and Rebecca have Jacob. Well, if you remember the story, Jacob wanted to marry Rachel. And his uncle Laban said, that's fine. You have to work seven years for me, then you get Rachel. Well, Jacob worked seven years, but on the wedding night, Laban whisked in his older daughter Leah without Jacob knowing it. And the next morning, he sees that it's Leah and not Rachel. He's obviously a little bit angry, but Laban knew Jacob loved Rachel, not that he'd work another seven years for her. And so after the, the marriage week was done with Leah, Rachel was given to Jacob too as his wife. So now Jacob has two wives, sisters. He loves Rachel, doesn't love Leah. So now here's the, the sibling rivalry. Leah understands that she's not the one Jacob wanted. Leah is understandably a little bit upset about the situation, so is Rachel. Well, the Lord does not give Rachel the ability to bear children at first, but with Leah, he does.
Yes.
Here's that first step.
Yes, there was about an inch left. I'll open it for you.
With Leah, she had Reuben, Simeon, Levi, and then Judah, then she stops having sons. When Rachel understands she can't have sons, or any children for that matter, she decides she's going to give Bilhah to Jacob to bear children on her behalf. That's why Bilhah has number five and number six. Number five and number six are Dan and Naptoley. When Leah sees that Rachel's servant is bearing Jacob's, Jacob's sons, she decides she's going to do the same thing. So Leah gives her servant Zilpa to Jacob to bear sons on her behalf. And so now you have Gad and Asher as the, the next in line for Jacob's sons. After that happens, the Lord gives the ability to be again to bear some children. Isaac or Zebulun are number nine and number ten. And then finally, at the very end, the Lord is gracious to Rachel. And she bears Joseph and Benjamin for Jacob. So we see Joseph there. Joseph is number eleven out of twelve. He is, he is in, in a sense, one of the young, not just one of the youngest, but the youngest, because Benjamin and Joseph, there's a little bit of gap in between them, probably about at least a six-year gap in between Joseph and Benjamin. So the Benjamin is certainly the baby. Joseph, in a sense, is the youngest out of, out of everyone. Because Benjamin is, is almost a a no-go, if you will. Here's the question on the sheets and now the question on the screen. Why would God allow Jacob to desecrate the design for marriage? He established that creation between one woman and one man without confronting him about it. You can either chat and answer in, you can unmute your mic and speak it in. Up to you. What are your thoughts?
I don't know.
Don't know is a legit answer. And Ken, your mic is unmuted in case you care.
Well, if it was his plan to have Joseph come to the rescue or do his will all along, and God gave Leah to him, he, it wasn't his perfect will, but he allowed it. And then Jesus came from the tribe of Judah, which was Leah. Very interesting.
The Lord certainly allowed this to happen. That doesn't mean he approves of the sin.
Right.
And this, of course, isn't the only time when, when someone is undermining God's plan for marriage. Jacob's not the first one, he's not the last one. So why doesn't Jake, why doesn't Jacob get punished for this? Why doesn't the Lord say anything about it?
Don't know.
Well, here's my answer that I have at least put on the screen. Just because the Lord does not specifically address a sin with a specific person at that specific time, doesn't mean he approves of it. He does address all of those sins with his word, though, doesn't he? Even though Jacob lives before the time of Moses, and Moses is the one who gets the law, and now we have the Ten Commandments and everything like that, there were still established rules and laws long before that. Some of them we know, some of them we don't. But with marriage, we know that the Lord established that all the way back at the very beginning of Genesis. One man, one woman in creation, a perfect established relationship. And so he had set it out from the outset. Jacob is ignoring that. So is Leah, Rachel, and their father Laban. You'll find this throughout the Bible. The Lord does not always address every single specific sin with every single person. He, a lot of times, just allows his word to address it. Some people will ignore it. And as we see in this particular story, when people ignore God's word, usually bad things happen. And with Jacob and his family, it was a struggle the entire time, from, from front to finish. Does anyone have questions on that? You can unmute your mic if you need to.
You know, I lost my raised hand thing, but compared to David and Solomon, that was pretty small potatoes, wasn't it?
Yep, David and Solomon would, would kick this up a notch, more than a notch. So those are two more examples of people directly going against what we would eventually call the Sixth Commandment. And the Lord not saying anything, but we, we do see with both of those instances, again, they did not have an easy time. When you go against God's specified rules and commands, it's not going to go well for you.
And yet he had amazing things to say about David and Solomon.
That's the grace of the Lord, isn't it? For the Lord continues to forgive us. The Lord continues for us personally to to consider us as children, regardless of the things that we do, no matter how egregious they are. We good at that point?
Yep.
If so, that was just kind of a little introduction into Joseph's family coming into Genesis chapter thirty seven. So with Genesis chapter thirty seven, we get to the first lesson in dreams and schemes. There you have Genesis thirty seven, two through four is what we're going to look at. And this link will hopefully take us to Genesis thirty seven on the screen. Does everyone see that? If you don't see it, that's okay. I will read it. This is the Christian Standard Bible, just to have a little bit of a change of pace. There's no other real reason why I picked it. So in Genesis chapter thirty seven, we're going to be verses two through four. If you printed out the PDF version of the Bible study and had that printed in front of you, that section is on page three, so you can read along with that too, the same words. So starting with verse two, going through verse four. These are the family records of Jacob. At seventeen years of age, Joseph tended sheep with his brothers. The young man was working with the sons of Bilhah and Zilpa, his father's wives. And he brought a bad report about them to their father. Now, Israel loved Joseph more than his other sons, because Joseph was a son born to him in his old age. And he made a robe with many colors for him. When his brothers saw that their father loved him more than all his brothers, they hated him and could not bring themselves to speak peaceably to him. So there is Genesis thirty seven, two through four. If you have the PDF version printed out or in front of you, you see that I highlighted or shaded a couple of the words in the section, because I want to talk about them. So the first thing I want to say is, this is when Joseph is seventeen years of age. If you would kind of look at the rest, rest of the story before this happens and how old his brothers are, Reuben is, is most likely around fourteen years older than Joseph is. So at this point, Reuben, the oldest of the boys, is probably thirty-one years of age or so. Joseph, still a teenager, the rest of his brothers, probably most of them in their twenties and then early thirties. And so they're young men, they're doing the work that needs to be done for Jacob. Joseph is helping them. What's also interesting in verse two is that he's working with the sons of Bilhah and Zilpa. And notice what Bilhah and Zilpa are called here. His father's wives. They are the servants of Rachel and Leah, but because, you know, he had children with these two women, the Bible specifically now calls them wives, even though he didn't, you know, technically marry them. As far as Scripture is concerned, when you have children with someone, or you do the act of having children with someone, the Lord considers that consummated relationship. This is kind of interesting how the Bible speaks of these two women in this context. The last thing I want to mention very quickly, before we get to the question, is in verse three, it mentions Jacob without using his name Jacob, he uses his new name, Israel. You'll find that throughout this story. Sometimes Jacob is referred to as Jacob. Sometimes he's called Israel. Does anyone remember what the name Israel means?
Stripes with God and wins.
Struggles with God, yes. So you see the, the last two letters of that name, E L. I've mentioned this in Bible studies before. When that E L is used, that's the name of God. Israel is struggles with God. Elijah has the E L at the beginning of the name. The Lord is God. So anything with E L at the front or E L at the end has to do with God in some way. Israel is used here. I don't know if it's significant at all, but it is a, a nice reminder to us that these, these twelve sons in effect are going to spawn the twelve tribes of Israel. Let's ask the question, then if you have questions on this section, I'll take them at the end. What family problems do you already observe in each of these verses that begin the story of Joseph? I'll stop this screen share for the moment and go back to the main screen. But the question is still on the table. What family problems do you already observe in each of these verses that begin the story of Joseph? What do you think? Either unmute your mic or type in. Ken types in jealousy. That is a good one. There's a big time problem already. Because Jacob loved Joseph more, the other brothers are going to be very jealous, and that's going to come into play later on in this chapter. What else do you see?
Joseph was squealed on his other brothers.
Joseph doesn't help himself at all. Joseph in verse two brings a bad report about them to their father. Now, whether they were doing something wrong or not, it doesn't really elaborate, but, you know, Joseph, Joseph is already in a tough situation, but he does not help his cause either. What else do you see?
Favoritism on the part of
Jacob. Say that more time, you.
Favoritism on the part of Jacob.
Yeah. So, so Jacob loves Joseph more. Certainly, that's kind of a sinful attitude and feeling that Jacob has. But he shows it in a very specific way. He doesn't keep it to himself. He makes a coat of many colors for Joseph. Now, back then, of course, if you're going to have a color of anything, that's a little bit of an expense. You have to take it from various pigment, pigments from various things. A lot of times, it's crushed flowers or things like that, that you make colors from. To make a coat of many colors is going to be an expensive coat, and he only gives it to Joseph. Well, Jacob's not helping the situation either. It's one thing to love a child more than others. It's another thing to very blatantly show in, in front of everyone else. And so already, you have a serious situation that's going to kind of blow out of control because of, of what's going on. So this is what I've written down, and what you guys have already said. The tensions mounting for what's going to happen next. Does anyone have questions on these first three verses, or maybe a comment that you want to make? Hearing nothing. Hold on, to the next section. Verses five through eleven of Genesis chapter thirty seven.
I did have a question.
Go ahead.
In that verse four, it says they hated him, and then it also goes on to say, and could not bring themselves to speak peaceably to him. So is that like two different sins, or that's in ASB version I'm reading, but.
Yeah, that, I would say it's similar to what Jacob has done. So Jacob loves Joseph more. That in itself is a sin to even feel favoritism, but now he shows it in a very specific way. That'd be an additional sin. The brothers hated Joseph. Well, you can hate someone, but not act on it. They hated Joseph and acted on it. They, whatever they said to him and whatever they said about him was not nice. So, so this is, like I said, I kind of, kind of building the scene, building the tension for what's going to happen next. Good for now. All right. Next section, five through eleven, the dreams. Then Joseph had a dream. When he told it to his brothers, they hated him even more. He said to them, listen to this dream I had. There we were, binding sheaves of grain in the field. Suddenly, my chief stood up, and your sheaves gathered around it and bowed down to my chief. Are you really going to reign over us, his brothers asked him? Are you really going to rule us? So they hated him even more because of his dream and what he had said. Then he had another dream and told it to his brothers. Look, he said, I had another dream. And this time, the sun, moon, and eleven stars were bowing down to me. He told his father and brothers, and his father rebuked him. What kind of dream is this that you have had, he said? Am I and your mother and your brothers really going to come and bow down to the ground before you? His brothers were jealous of him, but his father kept the matter in mind. Interesting section here. I'm going to go straight to the actual question on your sheet and on the screen. Why do you think God gave Joseph these dreams that predicted the future? This is just a thought question. You can't get it wrong.
He tells the end from the beginning. In many places in the Bible, it says that.
The Lord does like to predict what is going to happen. And here he is predicting it in a dreamlike form, so that people know it's not just a, a chance happenstance that things occur. These things happen because the Lord has predicted that they would. Good. What other reasons might he have given these dreams to Joseph that predicted the future?
Well, God has a plan already laid out for Joseph, and for that plan to be accomplished, he has to enrage his brothers so that they're going to sell him. So it's all part of the plan.
So that is the title of this Bible study, isn't it? God has a plan. With God's plan, sometimes he puts it into action through sinful people doing sinful things. We see that throughout the Bible, and we're going to see that here. So, so why did he give this dream to Joseph? Why didn't he give these dreams to Jacob?
He was preparing Joseph for the great things that he was going to do in the future.
Joseph certainly would remember these dreams later on in life, especially once Joseph rises to the top, not to get ahead of ourselves, if you don't know the story yet. But Joseph's going to have to go through some terrible things before he gets there too. He's going to probably need a little bit of an encouragement and comfort and confidence. And maybe these particular dreams are going to help pull him through those dark days ahead. There's probably a variety of different reasons. I think we have said most of them that I have written down.
I was out of the room, but did you say these probably helped prompt their? These probably helped prompt his brothers to take action?
Yeah, uh, part of one of the answers was this is going to set some things in motion. That the brothers. Are going to be driven to do some horrible things to their own brother, but. This was all part of God's plan. This is what I have on the screen here. We've mentioned most of them, I think, maybe to give Jacob insight into what was to happen with his boy and boys. Maybe, maybe to give Joseph hope in the hard years to come and maybe to add on to that what Jim Berger had said. To give Joseph an understanding of what's going to happen after the hard years that he really truly was going to rule. Maybe to set in motion a chain of unfortunate events so that God's will could be carried out. Maybe something else. There's probably dozens and dozens of different reasons that the Lord. Gave these dreams to Joseph that he doesn't spell out in his word and that we might not ever know. That's the way the Lord's will works, he. He likes to do things in strange ways and he doesn't always explain it to us. And that's okay. Here's a second question on the sheet on page four and also on the screen. Do you think God gives dreams to people today for similar reasons? If yes, explain why, if no, explain why. And you can see right in the middle of your screen. I'm not going to allow you to say yes and no. Don't ride the fence, pick one side.
Do you want us to talk until you know?
You can talk or you can chat or whatever you want.
Okay, well, I'd say that no, he doesn't give us dreams like that today. It's just like you talk about. You know, that God talked to me and told me that I should move so and so or take so and so job. I'd say that's the same situation that he doesn't, he doesn't talk to us in dreams today.
So Jim Berger is on the right hand side of the stream with the no, does anyone want to? Challenge Jim Berger's. Statements or side with him?
I agree because we have God's word, we don't need. Dreams. We have God's word.
That is a, another good addition to Jim Berger's original comment. How does the Lord talk to us today? He talks to us through his word. He doesn't need to talk to us in different ways like he did back then, so back then he not only talked to people in dreams, how else did he talk to people?
Through the angels?
Yep, sometimes he sends angels down and angels pronounce his word, how else?
Burning bush.
He is sometimes personally comes down and talks to them, yes, how else?
Through the apost, through the prophets.
Good, sometimes he speaks directly to a prophet or a priest and has them relay that message. Sometimes similar to a dream, it's a vision, he gives a vision to someone. Sometimes. The Lord had to speak to people because he didn't have the word actually physically written down. So if you don't have something physically written down. You had to verbally transmit it to people. As. As Neil chatted down below. He probably is not going to give us dreams, visions, things like that to tell us what he wants. But he does have the power to. So that's a different question, isn't it? If I had written down on the screen or on a piece of paper. Is God able to give dreams to people today for similar reasons? Well, that answer would be yes. He has the power to do that, he's capable of doing that, but he probably isn't going to, he doesn't need to. That's why as we had this discussion before in other Bible classes, if someone tells me. That they, that the Lord spoke to them in a dream or something along those lines, I might. I might not even contradict that. I might say something along the lines of, okay, good for you, fine. Because God can. He, he just probably doesn't do it. Any more thoughts or questions on that?
Even though he's not speaking to us through dreams and visions and all that, it's still remarkable that. He knows every circumstance, he still has a plan through everything. Uh, we don't know it like they were, like Joseph. Was and Jacob were examples of. It being revealed, but it's not revealed to us, but he doesn't work any differently. I mean, he still works, like you said, through sinful people.
It is kind of an interesting phenomenon in pages of the Bible where. He deals with people. And communicates with people a little bit different than he does today. So sometimes it's hard to take some of these Bible stories and say. That it's going to be a similar situation in our day and age. But he still, as you said, Penny, works through sinful people, doing sinful things even now, even though. Even though maybe the behind the scenes. Isn't spelled out for us now like it was back in biblical times. At least we, we understand that basic truth. That the Lord always does those things for the good of his people, no matter what kind of sinful people. It may happen through. Uh, Judy, if you can see there at the bottom of the chat. Has a comment and that's very true, that's something that. I was going to mention a little bit later when it came to the brothers' comments about the dreams, but it's good to bring it up now, Judy. Joseph could have kept the dreams to himself. That probably would have been the mature thing to do. But of course he's. Seventeen or maybe a little bit older than that at this point, I don't know how mature. Most seventeen year olds are going to be, especially when you're a spoiled brat and your father loves you and gives you everything that you want. Joseph could have told them to Jacob, maybe his father. Maybe that would have been the appropriate person to tell these dreams to. And asked his father, hey dad, I had these dreams, they were very vivid, they seemed to mean something, what do you think? Tell his brothers though, when. When the meaning of the dream seems rather obvious even to us, even if we didn't have the explanation later on in the story. I mean. To me. With. Three brothers. The only reason you tell that to your brothers is to get under their skin. I mean, I don't, I don't see any other reason why you tell them that, especially as the younger brother. So I would agree with you Judy, uh, Joseph once again. Does not help himself with his relationship with his brothers here. Anything else you want to add? Alright, we'll continue on then. The next section is a little bit longer section, I get back to that, Genesis chapter thirty seven. Twelve through twenty four is what we're going to read. His brothers had gone to pasture their father's flocks at Shechem. Israel, once again Israel, not Jacob, said to Joseph. Your brothers you know are pastoring the flocks at Shechem, get ready, I'm sending you to them. I'm ready, Joseph replied. Then Israel said to him, go and see how your brothers and the flocks are doing and bring word back to me. So he sent him from the Hebrew Valley and he went to Shechem. A man found him there wandering in the field and asked him, what are you looking for? I'm looking for my brothers, Joseph said, can you tell me where they are pastoring the flocks? They moved on from here, the man said. I heard them say, let's go to Dothan. So Joseph set out after his brothers and found them at Dothan. They saw him in the distance and before he had reached them, they plotted to kill him. They said to one another, oh, look, here comes that dream expert. So now come on, let's kill him and throw him into one of the pits. We can say that a vicious animal ate him, then we'll see what becomes of his dreams. When Reuben heard this, he tried to save them from them. He said, let's not take his life. Reuben also said to them, don't shed blood, throw him into this pit in the wilderness, but don't lay a hand on him. Intending to rescue him from them and return him to his father. When Joseph came to his brothers, they stripped off Joseph's robe, the robe of many colors that he had on. Then they took him and threw him into the pit. The pit was empty without water. Alright. Here's your question. What conclusions might you come to about Joseph, Reuben? And the rest of the brothers from this part of the story? Floor is open for you. I'll get off the screen and, and back. What do you think? What can you conclude about Joseph, how about we start there, start with Joseph?
What a scary situation to be in.
Joseph is jumped by ten, uh, young men, older and perhaps stronger than he is. And there's no way he's going to get out of it, thrown into a pit and he doesn't know what's going to happen to him. Scary situation. What else can we say about Joseph?
Well, again, he was being sent to check on his brothers who are. In the past, that's not a very good. Very good deal and you can understand his brothers being resentful for that and I. Sounds like Joseph probably kind of realizes the position that he's in.
Yeah, we see Joseph before was working with his, some of his brothers and brought a bad report. To his father and so he has a track record, as Jim said. What Joseph is set to check up on them and to bring a report back to his father. You know, his brothers are probably not too happy. That dad is sending his favorite son to check up on them, that's probably not going to go over well. As Neil says in the chat box, uh. Why wasn't Joseph working with them in the first place? Joseph is certainly old enough, he was herding sheep with his brothers before, but not this time. So why are all ten of his older brothers out there and he is sitting back? By himself. And with Benjamin probably, Benjamin's remember six years younger, so Joseph is about seventeen here. Joe, uh, Benjamin is around eleven years old, eleven years old is not going to. Probably be old enough to be tending the flocks. Uh, yeah, uh, Carrie, you mentioned Joseph appears to be unaware of how his brothers felt about him. He, he almost seems a little bit naive, doesn't he? He's, he's either. He's either an instigator by telling them his dreams. Or he's just really naive about how his actions come across. It's kind of hard to get a read on Joseph in these early years if. If he's just kind of a spoiled brat and doesn't understand how he comes across. Or if he does know and just doesn't care. Ju- uh, Joseph. I don't know, if I were Joseph and I had to go check up on my brothers and I knew. How they felt about me because it says before. They could not speak peaceably about him or to him. I mean, the tension there. You must have been very evident. I would have been a little scared if I were Joseph. Going all the way out there by myself to check up on my brothers knowing that. That they didn't like. Anything about me, but you know, maybe, maybe as you said, maybe he's just naive. Or maybe he thought, you know what, I'm untouchable. Yeah, they don't like me, I don't care, I'm my, I'm dad's favorite, what are they going to do to me? Hard to say. Anything else you can conclude about Joseph?
Would it have been disrespectful if he would have said to his dad, hey, I can't go out there, they're gonna. Not like it if I'm going out checking on him, I mean, what, what, what would have been the appropriate thing that he could have done in that? Culture in that time?
Yeah, it's a good question, I, I don't know what the appropriate thing would be culturally. Or socially. I think he probably at this point had just dug himself into a hole. I mean. If he would have said to his father, yeah, I don't think that's a good idea, they're not going to like me checking up on them. Jacob could have said. I need to know how they're doing, go out there anyway, I'm not going to send you younger brother Benjamin. But at this point. If Joseph hadn't, you know, instigated. Uh, the dislike for him in so many different ways, it, it shouldn't have been a problem, but now it is. So I don't, I don't know Penny if, if there was any way he could get around it. But as we said before too, the Lord's going to use this. For his good and his plan in any case. Danny, I'll go ahead.
Uh, Susan, um, I think a lot of this should be put on Jacob because. The way he pampered Joseph and. It, it's natural for, in our sinful nature that those brothers were going to hate him and. It seems like Jacob should have seen this and. Kind of backed off and. I don't know, it just seems like it's not just, uh. Joseph and his pride and his.
I agree with Susan. If you, if you couldn't hear Susan, Susan's basically saying. Yeah, Joseph might be at fault for the tension between the brothers and him, but. Jacob is just as at fault, Jacob was the one who showed favoritism to Joseph. Jacob was the one who gave him that colorful coat. Jacob was the one that didn't send Joseph out to work with his brothers. Joe, Jacob is the one that sent Joseph out to check on his brothers, I mean. You know, if, if Joseph is naive, Jacob certainly is naive. About, you know, what he is doing to Joseph and his brothers at the same time. It's, it's not a good situation, anyway you look at it. You can understand why something serious. Was about to happen. What can we say about, about Reuben here, the oldest?
Reuben kept him alive, you know, they all wanted to, you know, slay him and get rid of the body.
Reuben at least comes off here as a noble. Character, he wants to rescue Joseph, he wants to return Joseph to his father even. So Reuben as the oldest seems to have the most maturity out of the brothers that he. Not only is he not in favor of killing Joseph, he's not in favor of harming him in any way, that he wants to get Joseph safely back to his father and out of the situation. So Reuben comes out very, very good here. Later on in Genesis. Reuben does not come off very well, but at least here he's painted in a good light. And what can we say about the brothers that we haven't said already? I don't know if there's. Much more to say other than. They were, they were pretty harsh and cruel, I mean, I understand that you're angry about. They were, they were pretty harsh and cruel. I mean, I understand that you're angry about. To take it to that level is. As I say at the bottom of the screen. Ruthless. They didn't just want to beat him up. They, they were talking about taking his life, whether that was just big talk or not. That was. It was something that. Needed to be. Needed to be addressed. What other things do you want to say here? Uh, Nikki says there at the bottom of the chat box. As Cain was overwhelmed by hate, hatred for his brother, uh, these brothers are overwhelmed with hatred. For Joseph, that's probably a pretty good analogy and comparison that. Cain was not able to control himself. These brothers didn't seem to be able to control their anger too. Something that we have to work on ourselves on a daily basis. Anything else on this section?
There's a verse in the New Testament, he who was born according to the flesh persecuted him who was born according to the spirit. I don't know if that applies, but.
It, it does kind of apply. I mean, that's going to be talking about Isaac and Ishmael. A little bit earlier on in this story. And the Lord uses that as an analogy for unbelievers persecuting believers now. Non Christians persecuting Christians. So there is, there is a similarity here. Even though Joseph certainly is, is far from innocent in what's happening at this, in this section.
Um, how, how much do you think they were, um, paying attention to what they knew? Of God. It seems like Reuben might be the only one who, you know, has some consciousness about God. Um, I don't know at this point whether any of the rest of them, you know, do or not. I mean, we, we all know the part of the story where. You know, God intended this for good and not for harm. So Joseph certainly came to know that, but it seems like right now they're all, if they know. That this is not God pleasing, they're certainly in rebellion against God.
It is really hard to determine how much Jacob passed on to his sons. How much they knew about God's plan and God's will and God's word. It is a good point that later on, we do see that Joseph has a pretty good end, understanding. And perspective after the fact. And so he had to have some background. Here. Jacob had to have told his boys a little bit for Jake, for Joseph later on to have that kind of biblical and Christian perspective. You know, I would. I would guess that all the brothers had a, had a fairly decent grasp of what. Jacob knew, but at this point. They just didn't care, just like we don't care. Sometimes. We know what the Bible says. We know what God wants and sometimes we just flat out don't care. We let our emotions get the best of us and we move forward and, and kind of ditch whatever. God wants. That's always the way I always read this story that they knew better, but they didn't care.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Go ahead, Neil. Or Susan?
I didn't have anything.
Oh, your hand was up.
That was from earlier.
Anything else on this section? We haven't really got to the real good part yet, but we're out of time. Let's pick up with this last page, page six, which is going to be Genesis thirty-seven, twenty-five through thirty-six next time. That'll give us a nice running start into what happens to Joseph next. So we'll pick it up then. Think it went okay for the time being, uh, switching back and forth with shared screen and video. If you have comments about how to do it a little bit better. Give me an email or a text sometime before next Thursday and we can. Try to work it out. Next Thursday should have worked this morning. As I'm, as I'm looking ahead. This is the twenty-sixth and so. Next Thursday will be April already. April second and then the week after that is Monday, Thursday evening. As I think about it, I'm not sure if we'll do a specific. Bond a Thursday worship or not. I'm still planning that out in my head. If I do, I'm going to record it beforehand and, and post it so you can watch it on your own. I'll, I'll see what happens. But for the meantime, let's plan on six o'clock. On the screen next Thursday. And the following Thursdays, as long as we can't get together in person. Sound like a plan?
Yeah, Matt, did you say that this is gonna, that we can go back and watch this lesson? And I don't know how, where do you watch it?
I am going to post it. Or at least have Jessica post on Facebook and I'll post it also on the YouTube channel and I'll send links to everyone. It's recording right now. And I think what it records is just my camera. To me and it records, as you saw, if you saw the video clip, it records the shared screen. But it doesn't record like the chat bar. But I think I have. I think I've repeated most of the chats, so you'll hear me say them at least. So we'll see how it goes.
Okay, thank you, Matt. It, it went well.
Yep, I mean, like I said, with the worship services, this isn't ideal, but at least it's something to tide us over in the meantime. If you want to say anything right now, now is your chance to say anything to the group. Otherwise. We can close with prayer if no one else has anything to say.
I just wanted to say it's really good to see and hear everyone.
Yep, the fellowship part is the toughest part about this, where we don't really get to be around each other and talk to each other and visit with each other. And, or pray with each other. So at least we have an opportunity to do that now and you don't just get to hear me. On a recording or even with Facebook Live, we get to be here kind of together. And so we'll, we'll say a prayer for everyone. We'll say a prayer for the, the health and safety of. Not only us, but our community, our state, our country and our world. And also the, the continued blessings of God's word even online. So let's close with prayer. Dear Lord and Savior, in this kind of unique time in our lifetime, we ask for your, your protection. And your love and your power. Please continue to keep all of us safe and healthy, not only us individually and us as a congregation. But us as a city, a state, a country, and as a human population. We understand that there's going to be sickness and there will be death, but we also understand that you're completely in control. You have everything in your hands and you will continue to work out this particular situation that we're in for our good. Just like you worked out the situation that Joseph was in for his good and for the good of the world. Help us to be okay with what is going on in our lives, even if we can't understand it or explain it. And help us to share this comfort and the peace that we have in our hearts with those around us, especially in this time when people really don't. Have anything to grab on, to grab on to. We do. Give us the opportunity to share that with those, with those who need it most. We pray these things in your name. Amen. All right, everyone. Have a good rest of the night. I will see you hopefully again soon, whether digitally or in person. See you guys later.